This is a part hereditary matter of James and Rens, Hunter Borough Council and others.
Yes, Mr. Corner.
Thank you, my lord. I think Miss Ellis will go first, just to introduce a note that you asked for yesterday.
Thank you very much. Yes, yes, Miss Ellis.
Thank you very much, my lord. Yes, the advocates have collaborated to produce this note on adoption of plans prior to the 2004 Act.
Thank you.
Focusing on the position in Wales. It's a very tiny summary of a vast area of law, obviously.
Is this agreed between all council?
I believe it is, my lord, yes.
Can we, we can put on the front agreed note?
Yes.
Thank you very much for doing. Do you want us to look through it now?
My lord, it's entirely up to you.
Let, let, we'll just do sit down. Thank you. We'll just read it once, I think, to get the hang of what it says. Thank you. Well, we haven't read every syllable of the justice at all, but it does look, on the face of it, a very helpful piece of work. And thank you very much, all of you, for doing it.
Thank you very much.
Could you be kind and send it electronically to us so that we've got it?
Yes.
In a form in which it can be used.
I must take responsibility for the typing infelicities of...
Oh, well, I didn't spot any.
Then, my lord, also, we have a few more statutory provisions from Part Six, which we would like to put in.
Yes.
For the sake of completeness, and I don't understand things to be contentious.
Right.
And I shall ask my junior, Mr. Merritt, to deal with the conflict of the matter of pagination.
We've got something on the bench, Section sixty-eight?
That's it.
Seventy, Section seventy-eight.
There's a, Section seventy-eight is the interpretation provision. And the other little clip of provisions deal with the range of powers relating to revocation, review, and revision.
Okay.
After adoption, of course, but for sake of completeness.
And these are all provisions as they now are?
Yes, my lord.
Or as they were at the relevant time?
At the material time, yes, which is the same as, as now.
Yeah.
Particularly, we, we thought that this might be useful in view of some of the questions coming from my, my Lord, Lord Justice Holgate.
Yes. Well, we've got a tab, thank you, we've got a tab twenty-three.
Yes.
Section sixty-seven, so.
If I ask Mr. Merritt to deal with the suggested pagination.
All right, all right, you've got a plan.
My lord, I mean, I think it sounds like you were about to pose the same thing.
Right.
That we were, which is to put sixty-eight to seventy at the back of tab twenty-three.
Yes.
And that'd be, I think, sixty-three A to sixty-three E.
All right, so let's just write that on there. They're just sixty-three A, sixty-three D. So that's true for sixty-three E, yes?
Yes, my lord. And then, Section seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Perhaps I'll surprise you, we go at the back of tab twenty-six, just with the reference sixty-seven A.
Done. Thank you very much, Mr. Merritt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Miss Ellis. Then I think we come back to you, Mr. Corner.
Thank you.
Just before you go again, to be clear, so that everyone is aware, the live stream is working as it did yesterday. We have no reports of any difficulties with that, and that will continue throughout the remainder of the hearing this morning. Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you, my lord. When we, at the adjournment yesterday, I said that I just, in my remaining submissions, just wished to deal with two points raised by the appellant, if I might.
Yes.
And the first one is the reference to the English situation. And the second one, my headline is, is Section sixty-seven OTOs, if we're right? So if I may deal with the English situation to begin with. And much of what I say will echo Mr. Carter's submissions, and so I will seek not to repeat them. But just in summary, I just wanted to say the following, make the following points, if I might. There's reference in the appellant's skeleton at paragraph forty-four. The assertion that it's clear that in England, authorities have the discretion not to adopt a local development document where the inspector has recommended adoption. And there's the reference to the Rights case, the...
Yeah.
I can't remember whether at that time it was the King or the Queen, anyway. It was our Rights Community Action Limited. It was the King, wasn't it? Versus the Secretary of State, the decision of Mrs. Justice Leaven.
Yes.
Of this summer, or earlier this year.
Yeah.
So it was the King. That's, of course, in your authorities at forty-seven, three hundred and twenty-four onwards.
Do you want us to look at that?
I, I don't think it's going to be necessary, but I just wanted to give the reference for if you wanted to have it over.
Thank you.
I just made the following points, if I might.
Yeah.
One, the English legislation is different. A, it contains no restrictions on withdrawal. Comparable to those in Wales. Section twenty-two, of course, provides that an authority can withdraw its plan at any time. And I just add. The appellants draw attention to the fact that the original Section twenty-two was similar to the Welsh provisions now. But the fact is, Section twenty-two, as it is now, was what was before Mrs. Justice Leaven. And that's what matters for the current situation in England. So that's A. B, in England, there is no equivalent to Regulation twenty-five of the Welsh 2005 regulations in the English regulations, which, of course, are the town and country planning, local planning regulations of 2012. There is no equivalent to Regulation twenty-five. And C.
Yeah.
In Wales, pursuant to statute, there is a national element of the development plan, National Development Framework for Wales, usually called Future Wales, which, as we've seen earlier, requires that LDPs are kept up to date. Now, my fellow friend, Mr. Parkinson, said yesterday, and I agree, it's right that the National Planning Policy Framework in England seeks to, that plans should be kept up to date. And of course, the NPPF is a relevant matter, it's a material consideration.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it's not part of the development plan, and it doesn't have, therefore, the statutory primacy that the development plan gets.
Is the statement in the Welsh document that development plans should be kept up to date sufficient in itself to create a legal duty to keep plans up to date? Or is it to be treated instead as a policy statement?
Well, it, it, it's a policy statement, my lord, but it's one of the factors which I rely on for the interpretation of the legislation for which I contend.
Well, I suppose one could say that a policy statement like that sometimes could be reflected of the author's understanding of the legislation. But is it an aid to construction of legislation?
Well, I would say it is, my lord, yes. It, it, I would say it is an aid to construction of the legislation.
When was it produced?
Well, the Future Wales was produced in, I think, 2020. Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
That was the first issue of it, was it?
My lord, I'm not sure, we, we can check, but I'm not sure.
That's fine.
I don't think it was.
Can I just be clear for my part, in case I've not followed? It's a policy statement of the Welsh ministers, isn't it?
Yes.
It's not a policy statement of the legislature. I mean, it's not like, to take an analogy, it's not like a, a national policy statement under the 2008 Act in relation to infrastructure development. Adopted by statutory instrument.
No, but it's, but it's, it's a policy statement which is produced pursuant to the requirements of statute. Sections sixty to sixty-C.
But it's not been approved by the legislature.
No, it, it, it hasn't. But it's, it's issued by the Welsh ministers.
Thank you.
So, my lord, I make those points about the difference between the English situation and the Welsh in terms of the legislation. And even if, my lord, took the view that the statement in Future Wales, that plans must be kept up to date, were not relevant to the interpretation of the statutory, of the statute, of the legislation, then I would still rely on the first two points that I've made. Secondly, my lord, there has not been produced any evidence from the explanatory notes in relation to the English provisions comparable to that which we have produced in relation to the Welsh. In other words, there's been no evidence referred to from the explanatory notes stating that the Act gives effect to government policy, which government, with government policy, having, in effect, confirmed that there would be a requirement to adopt.
When you say there's not been, so sorry, forgive me, when you say there's not been produced any evidence.
Well, we have the explanatory notes.
Does that mean there isn't any?
Well, I couldn't find it, and I did look. I did look as extensively as I could to at whether there was anything in relation to England that was comparable to the statement in Planning Delivery for Wales 2000.
That, that's the policy document you're relying on, the?
Yes, it, it, it's the, it's the consultation document.
Plus the?
Plus the minister's statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
But, but I did, I did check, my lord, in answer to my lord, the senior president of tribunals' question. I did try and check whether there was anything comparable in the consultation documents or policy documents in relation to England, and I couldn't find it, so I have looked.
Just while we're on the explanatory notes, perhaps we should just bear in mind paragraph one hundred on page three, six, eight, which deals with Section sixty-seven.
Can I just get there, my lord? Divider forty-eight. Three, six, seven.
Yeah, three, six, eight is where we find paragraph one hundred, Section sixty-seven.
Yes.
Make of it what you will, but it is there.
Yes. Section sixty-seven provides for LDPs to be formally adopted by local planning authorities, et cetera, et cetera. Yes.
Do you say that that assists or is neutral?
Well, my lord, it is, it is either assists or is neutral, but certainly not against the interpretation for which I contend. And, as I say, paragraph six I do rely on because it refers to the policy which it is intended to carry through into legislation. But it certainly isn't against us, there's nothing in that paragraph that is against the interpretation for which I contend.
There's the, the relevant paragraph in the same document dealing with the English legislation seems to be paragraph forty-five. Page three, sixty.
Yes, and, and, and interestingly, it's on page three, sixty, as your lordship says. Interestingly, paragraph forty-five uses the word "may".
In the penultimate sentence?
Yeah.
May adopt?
Yes. Which, which one doesn't find?
Yeah.
In paragraph one hundred.
But that was what the draftsman saw when Section twenty-two was as it was originally.
Well, that's right, but of course, there was no Regulation twenty-five. You know, sorry.
Not in 2004, no?
Yeah, no, exactly, and.
But you adhere to the submission anyway that you made about paragraph one hundred?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. And, and, and I would say that it's interesting, my Lord, Justice Holgate, having quite rightly drawn, if I may say so, drawn attention to those two paragraphs, that there is a contrast in wording. And, of course, I say, and this was the first submission I made when I stood up yesterday, that the use of the word "may" does not preclude the existence of an obligation. I won't repeat that submission, but I do apply that, if necessary, to the wording of paragraph forty-five. But it is just interesting that insofar as the use of the word "may" is relied on by the appellant, it doesn't crop up in paragraph one hundred.
Right.
Thank you, my lord. And, my lord, the, the final point I, I wanted to make in relation to this matter is that.
Point three?
Yes, point three, indeed. The final point I wanted to make, point three, is a, a short one, that in the Rights case, I can't see that the possibility of there being an obligation to adopt in England was considered, let alone argued. And it was something that didn't have to be argued in that case, I would suggest, as Mr. Carter said yesterday. Because in reality, the consideration that the judge gave to this issue was in the context of whether there's, whether, whether the inspector's report, recommendation was a justiciable issue. And she said, yes, it is, because in reality, the inspector's report isn't just a recommendation at all, as it doesn't leave the authority with a free hand. And if she had concluded that there was a duty to adopt in England, she, she'd have been bound, I would say, to come to the same conclusion. There would be a fortiori, all the more so a justiciable issue in that case, which was what she was dealing with.
Right.
So, my lord, that's what I say in relation to the first point, the English situation. Can I deal finally, then, please, with the question whether Section sixty-seven three is OTOs? That's the subsection which requires an LDP to be adopted. My lord, I say the requirement for adoption is not OTOs if there's an obligation to adopt. Because a resolution is a formal act marking the importance of the action taken and ensuring that there's a formal record of the action and the date when it was taken. And of course, a date is needed as time for challenge of the LDP under Section one, one, three runs from the date of adoption. And the importance of adoption and the date of adoption being clear is shown by Regulation twenty-five at Subregulation Two, which is in your bundle of authorities at divider thirty, page eighty.
Yes. And that is to be understood as meaning after the date on which the LPA has made a resolution to adopt?
Yes, yes. Which requires the LPA to produce an adoption statement, publicize and advertising the adoption statement. And, my lord, I do say, and I said it in my skeleton, that Section sixty-seven, the requirement for adoption, can be compared with Section fifteen, subsection seven, of the 2004 Act, which is in your second divider at pages ten to twelve. Subsection seven's at page twelve.
Yeah, fifteen subsections.
Subsection seven.
Seven, yeah.
Subsection seven says that to bring, Section fifteen is all about the duty on the LPA to prepare and maintain a local development scheme. And subsection seven requires that to bring the scheme into effect, the LPA has to resolve that the scheme is to have an effect, and in the resolution specify the date from which it is to have an effect. And can I just say, we haven't covered this already, but my Lord, Lord Justice Baker asked yesterday that we look into whether there is a definition of resolution in the legislation, and none of us have found one, my lord, I'm afraid.
Thank you for looking.
But we did look. It's clearly, one can see, it's clearly not OTOs, even though there's an obligation to prepare a local development scheme. Now, Mr. Parkinson said yesterday that Section fifteen, subsection seven, is different from the situation that we have here because the authority has a discretion as to what goes in its LDS, its local development scheme. But my point is that Section fifteen, subsection seven, is, as Lord Justice Holgate said yesterday, it's procedural. Once you've decided what your scheme is, you have to resolve that it is to have effect and specify the date from which it is to have effect. Similarly, in this case, there needs to be a resolution to adopt, to make the plan into an LDP. That's Section sixty-two, subsection eight. Parliament wishes there to be a formal act of adoption. And the only way that that can be done is by, is if the members vote to adopt. And my Lord, Lord Justice Baker referred yesterday to local democracy. But, my lord, I would simply say this. The structure of the legislation has to be looked at as a whole. The Welsh ministers are a democratic body. The local authority is a democratic body. There are elections for both. And, my lord, what the Act does is it divides power and responsibility between those two democratic bodies. And the fact that obligations are placed on one in certain circumstances does not mean that overall there is a democratic deficit. My lord, my lords, unless I can assist further, those are the submissions I wish to make on behalf of the Welsh Government.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So thank you very much, Mr. Corner.
Thank you, my lord.
Yes, Miss Ellis.
Of course, I'm so sorry. Very much, my lord. As you know, Mr Merritt and I appear for the third to sixth respondents. I just wanted to clarify that at the outset, because in the court below, I appeared for a couple more as well. But it's now respondents three to six.
Right, and the other respondents are not...
They are not, I am not representing them.
They're not represented in these proceedings, in the appellate proceedings?
Lord, all of them, or all of our clients, have interests in land allocated in the draft local development plan. And those allocations, draft allocations, have been found sound by the examining inspectors. Some of our clients, and indeed others as well, have made planning applications which are currently effectively stalled by these proceedings. I respectfully adopt all the submissions of Messrs Carter and Corner, and I won't repeat them. But in relation to those whom Mr Merritt and I represent, we particularly wish to stress Mr Carter's submissions on the practical implications of the limbo situation for development management. And we've, some of us have labelled it the limbo situation or the non-adoption situation, because there is no statutory name for it. Because we say that it is simply not envisaged statutory scheme. In a moment, I'll give the outline of the submissions which I shall seek to make. They will fall into four parts of unequal size. But may I just respectfully draw the court's attention to one matter in connection with the discussion with my lone friend relating to the National Development Framework for Wales? And, lords, it may or may not help, but for sake of completeness, I draw attention to it. At tab twelve...
In the...
In the authorities bundle.
Yeah.
My lords will find section sixty B, which prescribes the procedure for the preparation and publication of the national framework. And within that, at subsections three to seven, there are prescribed procedures which require the draft of the framework to be laid before the National Assembly, together with a report, summaries of representations, explanation of how those have been taken into account and so forth. And the Welsh ministers are obliged, under subsection four, to have regard to any resolution passed by the National Assembly before they go on and publish. And then they are obliged later on to, in subsection six, to explain how they've had regard to the resolutions or recommendations of the National Assembly. And then there's a set period of days for the assembly consideration period. But just in view of one or two of the questions, especially from my Lord, Lord Justice Holgate, I wanted to draw to the court's attention that involvement which the Assembly has in the framing and scrutiny of that framework.
So the Assembly's views have to be taken into account?
Yes.
Not binding? I'm just trying to remember what happens with the national policy statements, I think.
I think, from recollection, that this equates to...
It's very similar, isn't it?
It's very similar, it equates to...
I can't remember whether Parliament has the last word in the national policy statements, but anyway.
Neither can I, but we can certainly...
Ultimately, it is the minister's, ultimately it is the minister's policy.
Yeah. We think, but we can check it, that the position in England with regard to national policy statements very much equates to section sixty B, and indeed, it may be. And I didn't want to interrupt Mr Corner while he was on his feet, but if, of course, my lords wish to hear again from the government on that, I wouldn't...
But in England, the national policy statements are a statutory instrument?
Yes.
Yeah. They're adopted, they're adopted under a statutory procedure.
Yes, they're adopted, yes.
I think it's what my lord is saying.
And the NPPF, the English National Framework, doesn't go through any parliamentary process. The national policy statements do. The national policy statements have limited application in Wales. I'll now come, if I may, to my main submissions and to give an outline of those, if I may. I'll start by expanding and illustrating a submission which we made in our skeleton on the coherence of the statutory sequence of actions in part six. The coherence of the statutory sequence of actions. And in doing so, I shall seek to address some of your lordships' observations which arose yesterday. Then I shall make short submissions on regulation twenty-five and the authorising statutory section. And I'll deal very briefly now, before I get on to those two main things, with seeking to answer one of Lord, Lord Justice Lindblom's questions yesterday about out-of-date, which we did return to briefly earlier on this morning. In Wales, out-of-date is not a term of art, either in statutory provision or policy. And that is one of the further respects in which the Welsh system differs from the English system. There is no equivalent of the NPPF paragraph eleven.
No tilted balance, no tilted balance?
No tilted balance, no tilted, no, absolutely. You get over the bridge and then you're free of tilted balance and all the associated case law, if I can say so without disrespect to the court. But clearly, as we saw yesterday, the legislation has its own way of dealing with datedness and expiry, indeed. And we have checked Planning Policy Wales, and I say we, I mean my lone friend, Mr Merritt, has checked Planning Policy Wales, which is a separate document from the National Development Framework, and equates, in a sense, to NPPF. And the phrase 'out-of-date' is not used anywhere in that document. And then, as your lordships know, fourthly, we've added in, for the sake of completeness, those provisions about revocation, review and revision of plans once they've been adopted in Wales.
Yes.
Now, I ask your lordships to turn first of all to the core bundle, page one-seven-eight, which is within our skeleton argument, which I know your lordships have very kindly read.
Yes.
And the paragraph which I'd like to go to is fifty-five, in the middle of that page.
Yes.
And it's from the fifth line down until the end, and I'll read it, because it's not very long, and then I shall expand on that and seek to make it good. The statutory sequence we submit is coherent, providing for, number one, shaping the draft LDP with full scope for public consultation and democratic choices by the authority; two, submission to independent scrutiny against statutory criteria, including by public hearing; three, communication of inspectors' findings and required changes; four, adoption of the LDP in the light of any such changes; five, public notice of adoption and incorporation of the LDP into development control functions, as Mr Carter was referring to yesterday. And we submit that introducing a discretion not to adopt at stage four would impede the statutory objectives lying behind the duty upon LPAs of preparing local development plans, which duty is contained in section sixty-two, which is where we're going to go next.
Right.
So, my lords, I'm going to work through part six.
So that submission, in all its aspects, is an important element of your argument?
Yes, my lord.
Understood.
Thank you. If we can start the journey at authorities bundle tab sixteen, please, which is section sixty-two. Obviously, I'm aware that the Court has spent some time looking at this already in argument. As we know, section sixty-two-one imposes a duty upon the local planning authority to prepare a, the words are, a plan for their area to be known as a local development plan, LDP for short. Sections two through to seven set out the required content and the matters to which regard must be had and other requirements. And I'll come back to those in a little more detail in a moment. But then subsection eight, on page fifty of three bundle, provides that a plan is a local development plan only insofar as it is, A, adopted by resolution of the local planning authority as an LDP, B, approved by the Assembly under its default powers. So, my lords, in the scheme of the legislation, adoption by the local planning authority is the defining action which makes a document into an LDP. So that resolution is an act of definition with regard to the document, and it's an essential act of definition, turning something which is not an LDP, it is merely a draft document, into the statutory document which the authority is required to prepare and adopt, namely the LDP.
Now, you inserted the word 'and adopt' in that last sentence.
Yeah.
What you're saying, is what you're saying that preparing a plan...
Yes.
incorporates adoption?
Yes.
Because adoption is a key component of a plan?
Yes.
So the word 'must' in sixty-two-one covers adoption for that reason?
Yes. And, my lord, until it is adopted by resolution, it is not an LDP, it's a something else. And the Council have therefore not discharged their duty under section sixty-two-one of preparing a plan for their area to be known as an LDP.
But section sixty-two-one doesn't require the plan referred there in that subsection to be the final plan? It's just a draft?
My lord, the preparation initially obviously relates to the production of a draft document. We'll look at the journey of that draft document within the statute in a little more detail in a moment. And, but it is a document which is brought to birth and then prepared to become, if you like, the adult document at that moment of definition which is required under subsection eight, when it turns into an LDP.
I see, so what you're saying is that prepare, as I think my lord has just said a moment ago, includes adopt, but not all local LDPs have to be adopted, some may be approved by the Assembly?
Yes.
So that would override subsection one, wouldn't it?
My lord, clearly subsection eight provides two ways in which an LDP, or a plan can be an LDP. And then, little A, which I shall submit is the paradigm in this part of the Act, is adoption by resolution by the local planning authority. And the local planning authority, we submit, is under duties in that regard. The other way, which is, I shall submit, is not the paradigm or normal way, is an exceptional way, is approval by the Assembly. And as we shall see later on, when we look at the powers of the Assembly and compare those to the powers and duties of the local planning authority, they are differently treated within the statutory scheme.
The linking or connecting word which is absent in subsection eight between paragraph A and paragraph B must be 'or', must it not?
One would expect there to be 'or', but...
But it can't be 'and', otherwise it would make the nonsense of what follows.
It can't be 'and'.
So it has to be, I mean, that is, whatever else one says about other aspects of this case, that is necessary implication.
Yes.
I don't know what that question has really added, but it does, perhaps it does go slightly to my lord's question about the alternative routes to finality.
Yes, my lord. Now, coming back to the earlier subsections of section sixty-two and focusing for a moment or two on subsections two and three, those allow scope and make provision for the expression of the local planning authority's policies and objectives. In other words, one could say those make provision for the expression of democratic priorities. Those subsections give scope for the local authority to shape the plan. But that expression of democratic objectives or political objectives by the authority is subject to constraints, checks and balances in the following subsections. I'll come to those in a second, but I would like to go now to one of the new provisions which we handed in this morning, and that's at tab twenty-six. It's the interpretation section seventy-eight, which is at page sixty-seven. which is at page sixty-seven A of the bundle. It's a small point, but for sake of completeness, we ought to perhaps look at it. Subsection one, a local development plan must be construed in accordance with section sixty-two. And so that obviously directs us back to section sixty-two subsection eight, which we were just looking at. Coming now, my lords, to look at those constraints, checks and balances.
Sorry, would you forgive me for a moment?
Yes.
Whilst we're on section sixty-two, I've just alighted on subsection five. Which again talks about preparation of an LDP, must have regard to, as a list.
Yes.
So having regard to suggests that that is the function of draft or preparing a draft, because it wouldn't make sense to be preparing as including adoption, because you've got nothing to have regard to if it's an absolute duty to adopt in accordance with the inspector's recommendation.
Yes, yes, my lord, and my lord is ahead of me.
Sorry, I've been.
No, 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 it's.
I'm trying to keep up, actually.
No, it's helpful. It's, it's, the contents of subsection five are one of those principal constraints, checks and balances, to which I have referred, and they're listed there. Then other checks and balances are the duty to carry out a sustainability appraisal, which is a very detailed exercise, statutory exercise. Six A, the implications for the Welsh language must be considered, and any local wellbeing plan is also relevant and must be considered. So the section includes within it some, let's say, constraints, checks and balances, fettering the absolute expression of political will, priorities, democracy, and so forth. So that's all included within section sixty-two. We turn now to the next tab seventeen and section sixty-three. This section deals with requirements for preparation process. And this introduces more constraints, checks and balances. Because the local development, sorry, the community involvement scheme and the timetable are mandatory. So one A, the community involvement scheme, and that is a compulsory part of enabling third party opinion about the plan, to allow people like my clients and many others, stakeholders, to have their comment and input into the plan. And then at B, at one B, importantly, the timetable for the preparation and adoption of the authority's LDP.
Does that connote a separateness between the continuous process of preparation of itself on the one hand, and the ultimate act of adoption on the other?
My lord.
Because if adoption was assumed in preparation, you wouldn't need to say "and adoption"?
No. My lord, that is certainly consistent with what we've seen in section sixty-two-eight about, and the Interpretation Act, section seventy-eight, about the adopting being a definitional moment, turning a something else into an LDP. And the LDP is the statutory quest. It's what the council is required to produce at the end of the process.
So preparation is the journey, adoption the destination?
Yes, yes. And adoption is something which is to be included within the timetable. And my lord, the way that section sixty-three works is that those ground rules, if one likes, to think of it like that, about community involvement and timetabling, those are to be, in the first instance, agreed with the Welsh ministers, and in default of agreement, the Welsh ministers can direct. And so that also.
Sorry to be slow, just at the sub-paragraph B, the timetable.
Yes.
Where is that set?
In a document which is published, I don't believe that it is before court.
No, but I mean, once I forgive me, I meant under the statutory scheme. It tells us that the LDP must be prepared in accordance with the local authorities' community involvement schemes, but I don't know if that's defined previously, sometimes it's in regulations.
Yes.
But how would you recognise what the timetable is, the answer to the statute?
Because, my lord, I think, and I'll be corrected by others if I am wrong, that these documents have to be, have to appear on the council's website.
Yeah.
And they become, they are clearly documents within the examination in public, which we're coming to under the next section.
Okay, sorry.
And so they're publicly available documents.
Right.
Thank you. Then section sixty-four, tab eighteen, independent examination. The authority must submit their local development plan to the assembly for independent examination, and that word "independent" is important, this is another of those checks and balances upon the freedom of democratic or political expression by the authority. And subsection five sets out what the purpose of the examination is, to determine, A, whether it satisfies the statutory requirements, regulatory requirements, and B, whether it is sound. Subsection six, importantly, grants a right to be heard for those, such as my clients, who made representations on the draft plan when it was put out for consultation. And so, my lords, as I, my lords, as I have said, the draft plan is the local authority's document containing their policies and objectives and priorities, but the Act doesn't allow unfettered expression of those. And in section sixty-four specifically, it is tempered by expert, independent scrutiny as to, amongst other things, how it relates to national policy, how it relates to the strategies of neighbouring areas and so forth. Those were the matters set out in section sixty-two, which we looked at, three A, five, six, six A and seven. So all of those matters are examined by the inspector to see how the plan sits in relation to those. Is it sound?
So do we have to read the word "draft" into section sixty-four subsection one?
Yes, yes, we do, my.
So the phrase "local development plan" is used on occasions in this journey.
Yes.
To mean "draft"?
Yes, yes, my lord. There has been litigation in England about similar terminologies quite a long time ago. But, but yes, in my submission, it is quite clear because of section sixty-two-eight and section seventy-eight, that that is how one has to understand it, until that definitional moment arrives, when the thing becomes an LDP.
So in six, going back to sixty-three-one.
Yes.
Is a local development plan there, a draft or, not a draft, in the first line of one?
My lord, it's a draft until such time as it's been through that definitional moment of adoption. And clearly, the thing that emerges post-adoption will have those characteristics. It will exhibit those characteristics, because otherwise the independent examiner won't have found it sound. But the duty with regard to preparation specifically must relate to the emerging document, which, until it's adopted.
Yeah.
Is an emerging draft document.
Planners will use the expression "an emerging plan".
Yes.
Planners will use the expression "a draft plan".
Yes.
But those terms do not appear in the statute.
No.
Just taking my lord's question perhaps a step further. Do we look all the way through these provisions and never find the language "draft", "local development plan"? Never find the language "emerging"?
Yeah.
Local development plan, we only ever find simpliciter "local development plan", is that right?
That's right.
Throughout these provisions?
Though I think maybe Mr Corner would.
That's a question, it's not a question to which I'm sure I know the answer.
Mr Corner obviously has something useful to add on that.
I'm sorry, I feel terrible now, I've interrupted, and I'm very sorry.
No, no, you're being invited to interrupt.
Now I have, I just wanted, it's not my lord's point, it's Lord Justice Holgate's point about, before we leave section sixty-three, I think, my lord, you were asking about provision for the timetable.
It's in the regulations.
Yeah.
I just found it, eight and nine. And the timetable and the local community involvement scheme has to be submitted to the assembly for approval.
Exactly, and section sixty-three subsection seven gives power to the assembly, now the Welsh ministers, to prescribe the things that we've just been talking about.
So it would now be approved by the ministers rather than the assembly?
Yeah. Sorry.
I'm very grateful to my friend.
Just forgive me, whilst we're on section sixty-four, we see this word "sound".
Yes.
And that's been the subject of decision, I think, by my lord, in this jurisdiction. It's not defined in the legislation, I imagine, here, for English purposes, it's explained in the MPF. What happens in Wales? We may not need to touch on this, but just to see the picture.
It is treated in the local development plans manual, the LDP manual, which.
If we could just have a reference, maybe, just in case it pops up.
Could you make a note of that, and I'll give you the reference?
Thank you.
But I'm sure the LDP manual is the place, oh, Mr Carter's helping, thank you. Yes, yes. And Mr Carter is helpfully pointing out that in the local plan inspectors' report, which is a document we've not looked at yet, it's in the supplemental bundle behind tab one, at page eight. The inspectors helpfully set this out. And the derivation is indeed the development plans manual.
So which paragraph?
At one point three.
Sorry.
One point three, my lord. And the submitted LDP is being prepared pursuant to the Act and the regulations. We have considered it against the tests of soundness, which are set out in a table in the LDP manual or the development plans manual, three tests, does the plan fit? Is it clear that it's consistent with other plans? Is the plan appropriate? Is it appropriate for the area in the light of the evidence? Important point there. And three, will the plan deliver? Is it likely to be effective? And I'm sure that we can also, in due course, supply the reference in the manual, because we've got that in the court documents, unless my lord would like to go there now?
No, I think we can, I think we can just carry on.
Good, thank you. My lord, a question, again, anticipates really my next submission. If we could go back to tab eighteen of the bundle, the authorities' bundle, and section sixty-four, and look this time at sixty-four subsection five. And B, soundness. In my submission, deciding under five B, or five A as well, whether the statutory requirements are met and whether the plan is sound, within the meaning as explained there by the inspectors, is likely to require inspectors to decide some questions of fact and make some planning judgements, potentially the latter of some complexity. And, my lords, the inspectors in this case did so here. The inspectors' report, which we've now seen as in the supplementary bundle, is full of such judgements on the range of matters alluded to in the appellant's witness statements about housing and concern about the housing of travellers, concern about affordable housing, all of those matters, we could go through them now, but the clock is ticking away. All of those matters were considered by the inspectors, and they reached planning judgements that the plan was sound in that regard. Reverting to section sixty-four, the fruits of this exercise of public examination are addressed in subsection seven. By saying that the examiner, the inspector, must A, make recommendations, B, give reasons for the recommendations, then subsection eight, the authority is obliged to publish those. And those are, they're very familiar provisions in this type of area, in this general area of law, of course, but they are, in my submission, significant in the scheme. They are in particular a major way in which the people who are referred to in subsection six, who make representations and have a right to be heard, and any other interested member of the public, can see and understand the final form of the plan. They can see the plan having been through that particular check and balance of the independent expert examination. My lords, I would like to skip over at the moment the next few sections, sixty-five to sixty-six A, because all of those, as I said earlier, deal with what in my submission is the non-standard situation of assembly intervention. I'd like to take port next, if I may, to tab twenty-three in section sixty-seven itself.
Yes.
So we've reached the position where the examining inspector has issued a report and the reasons for it, and those documents have been publicised. And we then come to section sixty-seven, which is with the final stage in the process for discharging the duty to prepare something which is an LDP imposed by section sixty-two-one. Firstly, we can note at subsection three, a plan is adopted for the purposes of this section if it's adopted by resolution of the authority. That, in my submission, reflects and harks back to section sixty-two-eight A. It's what I've termed the defining action, which is necessary in order, finally, to discharge the section sixty-two. discharge the section sixty-two duty. Sections, subsections one and two prescribe two forms and two forms only in which this may be done, and which of these forms is to be used is determined not by the local planning authority, but is determined by the recommendations provided pursuant to section sixty-four seven. The inspectors' report and recommendations in it. And as we noted a few moments ago, inspectors, in this case the two, are obliged to give reasons for those recommendations. And as we've seen, that's been punished. If it were open to the local planning authority to do something other than adopt in one of the two specified forms, then one would expect a duty to give reasons for departing from the inspector's recommendations. But there is none, neither in section sixty-seven nor anywhere else in the statutory framework. One might well expect the statutory considerations to be set out. If, for example, Lord Justice Holgate's major change in national policy or other circumstances, section sixty-seven is silent and so is everything else. And I now would like to go back, as I said I would, to section sixty-five behind tab nineteen. And to compare section sixty-five with sixty-seven in those respects. Section sixty-five, as we know, is one of the non-paradigm situations of intervention by the assembly. And my lords, Lord Justice Baker and Lord Justice Holgate, yesterday asked, my learned friends, about subsection nine and the use of that word reject. And I'd like to start with that in subsection nine A. The formulation is noticeably and in my submission materially different from the formulation in section sixty-seven, because the Welsh Government have three options they can approve: approve subject to specified modifications, or reject the plan which has come to it as a result of its intervention. So they have an express power of rejecting the plan, which is absent from section sixty-seven.
They also have an express power to adopt modifications which haven't been recommended, so their powers are broader anyway.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
That was my very next note.
Just so I understand that. Broader than under section sixty-seven?
Yes.
Where the local authority can only comply with, follow the inspector?
Exactly.
They also have a duty to give reasons?
Yes, yes.
Subsection?
Because...
How roughly?
There needs to be a duty to give reasons because they have got a genuine discretion, or they've got a discretion to exercise in these circumstances. But there is no place for a duty to give reasons under section sixty-seven because there's no discretion. And in my submission, these are noticeably important differences within the scheme of part six. Just very briefly, there are further points if we look at subsections seven and eight. Subsection seven says that in considering a plan submitted in these circumstances, the government may take account of any matter which it thinks is relevant. So very broad power of material considerations to be permissible there. And then it spells it out even more in subsection eight: immaterial whether any such matter was taken account of by the authority. So again, the sort of thing that one might expect to see when there is a discretion present, the scoping of matters.
Can I just ask about specified?
Yes.
Modifications?
Yes. My lord, it's not defined, that term is not defined, but in my submission, what it means is modifications which the government wants to make, to see to the plan which it must specify in order that it can give intelligible reasons. But it's not a defined term.
Is this, is it a reference back to subsection one of sixty-five? Is that what it means?
Subsection one of sixty-five, I would say not, my lord.
That's the word modifier. Modify doesn't appear in, does modify, the word modify appear elsewhere in the journey you've taken us through, or is it specifically in section sixty-five?
Yes, it could, modifications appears elsewhere, but in this sense, these are the assembly's modifications, and they are at large, they're not constrained by the inspector's report. And so they are the assembly's proposed modifications which it must specify because they may not already have been specified by the inspector.
Can I also ask if the inspector has, modify does, yes, modify does appear in section in section sixty-seven? So it could be his modification?
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be his modification.
In section sixty-seven, it can only be the inspector's modifications.
I'm sorry, I'm being, section sixty-five, it's not so confined?
It's not so confined because this is the, this is one of the default, non-paradigm powers of the assembly.
So is it your submission that the authority has a wide discretion here?
The government has a wide discretion.
Yes, the government has a wide discretion.
Which is why we see the features associated in legislation dealing with public bodies over many areas, the features, the symptoms of the existence of a discretion.
And it has to give reasons because it's making a choice.
Absolutely.
And there's no provision for reasons, you say, in sixty-seven because the LPA is not making it?
There's no choice to be made, nor is there any provision for what are statutory matters which are permissible to take into account. Yes, my lord. My lords, therefore, for all these reasons which I say are there within the statutory code, we submit that section sixty-seven imposes the duty upon the local planning authority to adopt in one or other of the specified forms. Might I now come to my shorter, much shorter submission on regulation twenty-five?
Yes.
Yes, and we need to start, please, behind tab twenty-six of the authorities' bundle.
Just going back to the argument you've been developing, what the authority does at the adoption stage follows on from the examination process, and as you pointed out, there's a right for people who want the plan to be changed to be heard.
Yes.
So it could be said to be implicit in the statutory scheme as a function of fairness that reasons be given in any event to deal with the principal controversial issues in that process, even if the statute hadn't said anything.
That the inspectors would be obliged to do that.
Well, exactly. Even if Parliament hadn't put that into the primary legislation, fairness would call for it.
Yes.
If that be a correct analysis, could that not have implications if there be a power not to adopt for what the authority must do at that stage? Because it's in the context of there having been principal controversial issues.
Well, lord, if the authority had a discretion under section sixty-seven, if they did, which obviously is not...
Yes, of course.
Then yes, but in my submission, it's a very strong contra-indication within the scheme, because elsewhere in the scheme, there are statutory obligations to give reasons in section sixty-four and section sixty-five, and those are markedly absent from section sixty-seven. It would be extraordinary, in my submission, for the common law to be relied upon in the authority situation when the, when a statutory obligation is imposed upon the examining inspectors and the assembly. And in my submission, that's a further indication in support of our submission. Lord, may I now come on to very briefly at regulation twenty-five and its authorising power? Tab twenty-five, six, tab twenty-six, contains section seventy-seven. And under subsection one, assembly may by regulations make provision in connection with the exercise of functions conferred by this part on any person. And then at two, the regulations may in particular make provision as to, so A to K, that it's not exhaustive, but these are particular ones. I, at the bottom of page sixty-six, the time at which anything must be done for the purposes of this part. And clearly, this part refers to the Act itself and the scheme, statutory scheme, which we've just been examining together. And the phrase there is anything which must be done. As I say, I don't suggest that subsection two is exhaustive, but when one comes to look at tab thirty at regulation twenty-five, in my submission, it very obviously falls within section seventy-seven two I. Because at subsection one, it is prescribing the time during which something must be done, namely the adoption of the LDP. And others have discussed the importance of that and the trigger in terms of challenge and so forth.
Right.
My lords, unless there is anything else on which I can assist, those are my submissions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Ellis. Mr. Carter?
My lord, it's just a matter of housekeeping. You were asking, Miss Ellis, for whether draft LDP or emerging LDP is defined. I don't think it is in the Act.
No.
But it is in the regulations.
Oh, is it?
It's not. The definition section, provision, article, article two is not in your bundle.
No.
But we can make it available.
Yes.
Emerging LD, I'll just read it, it's very brief, I can. Emerging LDP means a) a document proposed as an LDP made available pursuant to regulations fifteen, seventeen, or twenty-two, one; b) a document proposed as a revision of an LDP made available pursuant to regulations fifteen, seventeen, twenty-two, one, or twenty-six B, in either case which has not been adopted either by the LPA under section sixty-seven or approved by the Welsh Ministers under section sixty-five or seventy-one, four.
Right.
My lord, I'm sure we can make it available, but I just thought it might help if...
That's very helpful, thank you very much.
I'm very grateful to my learned friends, and I'm...
The gratitude is owed to my instructors list.
I obviously apologise about the misleading nature of my answer, which was unintentional.
I don't think it was at all, but thank you. Yes, right. So, Mr. Parkinson, back to you for your reply.
Thank you, my lord. Start off, we started off yesterday with approach, and the approach set out at the outset yesterday isn't in dispute between the parties. Given the use of the word "may" in section sixty-seven, what we're looking for is clear and compelling evidence that displaces the presumption that that confers a discretionary power here, a conditional power, on the local planning authority. And I would suggest that that agreed approach provides a very helpful framework for working through the rival submissions of the parties, because it's not sufficient, we say, for respondents to point to an indication here, an indication there, that may suggest that there's a mandatory duty, that must arise, that must be clear and compelling as a matter of necessary implication from part six as a whole. And our simple point is that there is nothing before you, nothing that you've heard, which is sufficient to displace that starting presumption that "may" in section sixty-seven means "may". If I can start off by dealing with points developed by my learned friend, Miss Ellis, that you've just heard. So first of all, in relation to the interpretation of section sixty-two one, and in particular whether the reference to "must prepare" includes within it "must prepare and adopt a local development plan". And then secondly, the significance, if any, of the lack of statutory duty to give reasons in section sixty-seven. So dealing with the first point first, our response is that where we look at section sixty-two one, so tab sixteen, page forty-eight, the reference to prepare there does not incorporate adoption, and that the scheme of the Act is clear that there is a distinction between the two concepts, between prepare and preparation and adoption. And in particular, where references are made to prepare or preparing, that is preparing a draft plan, which is then submitted to examination. And at that point, once the plan is submitted to examination, the plan is no longer being prepared, it's then being examined. And once it's been examined, a decision is then made on whether to adopt it. And we can see those three key elements and the distinction between them through the wording used in the Act. So first of all, we go to page forty-nine, subsection five, as my lord, Lord Justice Holgate drew our attention to. In preparing a local development plan, the authority must have regard to, and then there are various documents. Again, that's a strong indication, we say, that the reference to prepare in section sixty-two one is talking about that stage prior to submission to examination, when the document is being prepared and has been drafted and is in draft form. Further support for that is drawn by section sixty-three, which we come to next, which is on page fifty-three, where subsection one B in terms makes a distinction between preparation and adoption. This is all under the heading of the section Preparation Requirements. So where the Act talks about prepare and preparation in section sixty-two one, it's talking about what we see in section sixty-two, which is, again, as I said, the preparation and the drafting of a plan, which is then submitted to examination, at which point preparation stops. And we can see that when we look at the tasks given to the inspectors at the examination on page fifty-five, because one of their tasks, section sixty-four, five, is whether the plan satisfies the requirements of section sixty-two and sixty-three. So when the plan is being examined, one of the questions the inspector has to ask is, are the preparation requirements in section sixty-three satisfied? And that's because at that stage... And that's because at that stage in the process, the preparation has ceased and the examination has begun. So that is, we say, what the scheme of the Act is. That's point one. Point two is, it would be surprising if a duty to adopt were to be found not in section sixty seven, headed adoption, but in section sixty two, one. As I understood it, my learned friend, Mr Corner, accepted that any duty arose within the four corners of section sixty seven itself, which would be inconsistent with the finding that the duty is to be found in section sixty two, one. And I do make the point that that was also the finding of Mr Justice Eyre. There was no suggestion that the duty to adopt was to be found in section sixty two, one. So those are my submissions in relation to the duty being found there. In relation to section sixty seven, and whether there's any significance of the fact that there's no statutory duty to give reasons in section sixty seven, in particular, when we compare it with section sixty five, nine, two points. Firstly, in a situation where a local planning authority exercised their discretion and chose not to adopt a plan, then we would say and accept that there's a common law duty to give reasons would almost certainly arise, adopting the approach of Lord Carnworth's Supreme Court in CPRE and of this court in Oakley.
In?
In Oakley. Because in that situation, you would have a report, not an officer's report, but an inspector's report, giving a recommendation. The members would be departing from it on a matter that would almost certainly be of controversy and which would certainly have significant implications for the development of the area in the future. So thinking about, we haven't got CPRE in the bundle, but thinking about the circumstances where Lord Carnworth said in CPRE, a common law duty would arise, that would almost certainly be met here. But in any event, we say that there's no significance from the fact that it's not expressly set out because, and I'll come back to England in a minute, but in the relevant provision in England, section twenty three, where it doesn't seem to be disputed that there is a discretion, there is no statutory duty to give reasons there.
Section sixty three.
Section twenty three in England.
Twenty three, sorry.
Twenty three in England.
I just was wondering this, though, which is perhaps a slightly different point. Where a duty is expressly provided in the Act, had it not been, would there in any of those instances have been a common law duty to give reasons? Yeah, I mean, you see the point. I mean, in other words, Parliament has expressly provided in some places for a duty to give reasons, but has it done so needlessly in some places, do you say or not?
Yes, and I would submit that in section sixty five, nine, were those, were there not a duty to give reasons there, it would almost certainly have been a common law duty in any event.
Is there any, I'd go a step further then, is there any instance where it has provided, where it had to provide because there wouldn't have been common law duty in operation?
Lord, perhaps I can come back to that, I can't think of the top of my head.
No, no, I mean, it's a fastball, I know.
Yeah.
But I mean, it does logically follow from the discussion, I think.
Yes. Maybe, as I go through, maybe my subconscious will put it to the front of my mind.
Or your junior.
Or my junior, yes, perhaps, one or the other. But my lord, in terms of the significance of the fact that there is a statutory duty in section sixty five, nine, I mean, the fact that this is expressly stated there can be explained by the fact that unlike in section sixty seven, as we've discussed, Welsh Ministers can approve a plan subject to modifications that hadn't been proposed by the inspector. So one would expect a statutory duty to be expressly mentioned there.
Well, in fact, not encouraging any discussion of the SEA directive, but that overlies this legislation. I forget when the directive came about, but it was before two thousand and four. But if, for example, the ministers were to propose a modification which hadn't been discussed before, you'd have to go through SEA procedures.
You would, you would have to go through.
So this isn't necessarily a complete code in any way?
It's not, it's not. But the other thing I would say is, the assembly has to give reasons even if they approve exactly what the inspectors recommended. And one of the other reasons why reasons are given at this stage in the process is because the assembly is approving a plan that isn't or wasn't their plan originally. So I would suggest that that's why we also see a statutory duty here, for that reason alone, because that duty applies even if there are no changes made, when it doesn't apply to the LPA when there are no changes made under section sixty seven. So there's two things going on here. The Welsh Ministers have broader powers. And secondly, because it's not their plan, that explains why, I would admit, Parliament has given an express statutory duty to give reasons. So those are our responses to the points from this morning. In terms of, I can come next to the position in England and in Wales prior to the enactment of the two thousand and four Act, and in particular, picking up on the agreed note that was put in. And I'll come back to the note in a minute. We say the position in England is highly relevant context. It's agreed that the Act must be read as a whole, and therefore, part two is relevant in construing what's meant by part six. There's a discretion in England now, I don't understand that to be in dispute, and it's certainly the practice of local planning authorities in England. And as such, one would expect there to be a clear difference in the language and structure of part two and part six that makes it clear that this is the case. And the simple point is, there's not. In particular, both section twenty three in England and sixty seven in Wales use the permissive language of may. And it would be inherently surprising if may had a different meaning in part two as opposed to part six. Further, the respondents have made clear that their position is that there was a mandatory duty to adopt on enactment of the two thousand and four Act. Understood that to be a submission made by my learned friend, Mr Carter. And that has two consequences.
In Wales?
In Wales.
Yeah.
In Wales. That has two consequences. Firstly, the changes brought about through the twenty fifteen Planning Wales Act are of less relevance, we would submit to the call, in construing what's meant by section sixty seven. That's because on the respondent's case, there was a mandatory duty to adopt both before and after those changes, they haven't changed anything. And of course, it is the two thousand and fifteen Act that brings in the national framework to the development plan within Wales. So that, it doesn't change the position, and I would submit is therefore of less relevance.
So forgive me, I hadn't picked up on that last point. Are you saying that the Statute of Law Act, part six, didn't refer to the framework as?
I might be wrong on that. Let me double check. I, my understanding is that, let me, my lord, let me, let me double check. So it's in, it's in section.
Well, there was certainly a substitution in section sixty two introduced by twenty fifteen, and section three A was inserted as, subsection three A was inserted as well, but that begs the question, how did it read originally?
So we have, it's section, well, section sixty, which we have at tab ten. Says there must be a plan prepared and published by the Welsh Ministers to be known as the National Development Framework for Wales.
Again, it's a substitution.
A substitution, yes. Certainly might, let us check. I'd understood that the introduction of NDFW into the development plan was brought about through that Act, which also.
But you're submitting that in any event, it makes no difference to the construction of section sixty seven?
Yes, although I was making that submission on the basis that it had been brought in after enactment of the two thousand and four Act. So if that's wrong, then that submission is also wrong. But that's a factual point that hopefully between us, we can.
Well, I think rather than anybody feeling under pressure to resolve that question now, I'd be inclined to invite you, pleased by the end of the day today, to submit, if you can, an agreed position on that question.
The second point, then, the second implication, is that because the provisions in England and Wales, as I went through yesterday.
So just to make sure I've got a note of, your submission brought in the NDFW, but in any event, I think the way, the point you're putting is that the changes with regard to limits on the power to withdraw, which were brought in by the twenty fifteen Act, have less significance if there was a duty to adopt in the original statute.
Yeah.
That point would still stand.
That point would still stand.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, sorry, my lord, I made a general point.
Maybe icing.
Yeah, the other point wouldn't, because there were two changes, there's the NDFW and there's the withdrawal changes. The withdrawal changes were definitely brought in by the twenty fifteen Act, so they would be of less relevance. Then there's a factual question about whether NDFW was brought in in twenty fifteen, or was there on an enactment or not, which affects whether the submission is also good in relation to that.
Mr Corner.
Lord, I'm just looking at Planning and Capulatory Purchase Act two thousand and four as originally enacted. And on this side of the room, we all think it's right that the NDF, as part of the development plan, was introduced in the twenty fifteen Act. In the original thirty eight of, section thirty eight of the two thousand and four Act, for the purposes, section thirty eight subsection four, for the purposes of any area in Wales, the development plan is the local development plan adopted or approved in relation to that area. And in the original section sixty, there, I can't do it standing up, but there was a reference to a Wales spatial plan that had to be compiled. But it's pretty clear if one looks at the original thirty eight, four, that that was not part of the development plan.
Right. Good, well, that's the position of the respondent.
My lord, and given that, and maybe we can get a, produce a written note, just setting that all out.
It would be helpful, but I think I would like to suggest, please, or ask, please, that that's done by the end of the day today.
Yeah. But if that is right, then both of those factors relied on by the respondent, the additional withdrawal provisions in section sixty six A, and the fact that NDFW is part of the development plan, have no bearing on whether there's a mandatory duty to adopt in section sixty seven or not, because on the respondent's case, it must be the position that that duty existed before those changes were brought about. The other consequence.
Sorry, just to, just to help me, as the Act was originally enacted before the twenty fifteen changes, were there any differences on the limits on withdrawal powers between Wales and England?
No. So what that means also, looking at it from the flip side, is that because the provisions were materially similar on enactment in both England and Wales, if we've ended up in a position where there's a discretion in England, but not in Wales, that must be through a change on the English side, and the only change can be the Localism Act. And for the reasons I went through yesterday, they do not, those changes are not sufficient to convert the position on enactment, where there was no discretion, to one where there was a discretion. So that's how we say it plays out. But also, just picking up the agreed note, because the other thing is, what was the position before the two thousand and four? And the answer to that is in paragraph three. There was no duty to accept inspector's recommendations, there was no duty on the LPA to accept the proposed modifications or to adopt the plan with or without those modifications. So prior to two thousand and four, the inspectors could recommend modifications, there was no duty to adopt with those modifications. That changed on the enactment of the two thousand and four Act, because if you are to adopt a plan, you have to do so with the modifications proposed by the inspector. But also before two thousand and four, that its common ground, there was a discretion whether to adopt at all. So if that changed with the two thousand and four Act, the enactment of the two thousand and four Act, that would have been a significant change from the agreed position before the enactment of the two thousand and four Act, a significant change. Which is why the fact that there's nothing in the explanatory notes is actually a point that's strongly in favour of the appellant's interpretation. Had we gone from a position of discretion in England and Wales on whether to adopt, to what the respondents say the position was on enactment, which is a mandatory duty to adopt in England and Wales, one would expect that to have been noted in the explanatory notes. But we went to the paragraph, so I won't go back to them, but paragraphs forty five, which is page three hundred and sixty of the bundle, and a hundred, three hundred and sixty eight, say nothing about that. And I would submit that that is the most interesting thing, what's said in the explanatory notes, the fact that nothing is said. Because that would have been a significant change. And likewise, the change brought out, the respondents have to say, by the Localism Act in twenty twelve, would have been a significant change. But we have nothing to suggest that either of those changes were made.
Sorry, the change in the Localism Act?
Well, yes, because if.
Which changes that, there was quite a few.
So it would be the changes to section twenty three, which is the main modifications procedure.
Yes.
And then the change to the withdrawal provisions in section twenty two, which I went through yesterday, I won't go. Yeah. But the respondents, as a matter of logic, would have to say that those changes changed the position in England from being a mandatory duty to being a discretionary power. That's the logic of where we get to, I would submit. We don't see anything, there's nothing before you to suggest that that was the intention behind those changes. But also, if the government did intend to make such a significant change in England, back to the.
Pre-two thousand and four situation.
Yes, pre-two thousand.
You're saying it's striking that there's no reference in any explanatory note to either of those changes?
But also, it'd be a very odd way to do it. Wouldn't you have just changed the language of section twenty three? Because the respondent's logic gets us to, in England, pre-two thousand and four discretion, two thousand and four mandatory duty, twenty twelve discretion, but throughout all of that, the basic structure and language of section twenty three, the adoption provision, is unchanged. Our position is, I would submit much simpler and something that flows from what we see in the Act, which is that, as is agreed, pre-two thousand and four, there's a discretion, on enactment, there was a discretion in England and Wales, and in two thousand and twenty two, what are we now, two thousand and twenty four, there's a discretion in England and Wales.
So discretion all the way through.
All the way through. Because it would be such a fundamental change to the plan-making system. It's the absence of anything before you, I would submit, is actually the best evidence that nothing, nothing has changed. It's the absence of anything before you, I would submit, is actually the best evidence that nothing has changed. The next heading is limbo. And I'm not going to repeat what I said yesterday in terms of... Our overarching point is that any limbo can be resolved through powers that the Welsh ministers have. Contrary to the submissions made yesterday, that is something that will be costly or introduce undue delay. In particular, if a plan is called in under Section 65-4, the Welsh ministers will have a report, they will have recommendations, and if they wish to adopt the plan as proposed by the inspectors, that's something that can be done in short order. If they decide not to, there would be no good reason for the Welsh ministers not to then direct themselves that the plan be withdrawn or to make a withdrawal direction upon a request made by the local planning authority.
Sorry, can you just say that again?
Yeah, so if the Welsh ministers have chosen not to call in the plan, or have called it in and decided to reject it, there would be no good reason for them not to make a withdrawal direction or for them to refuse a request made by a local planning authority for the plan to be withdrawn. So a limbo shouldn't arise. In any event, a limbo isn't a problem. And the Act doesn't see it as being a problem. Because any problematic limbo also arises under Section 65-9. If the Welsh ministers do call in a plan and reject it, you then have, in effect, a non-adopted, non-withdrawn plan. But in any event, even if we do end up in a situation where we have a non-adopted, non-withdrawn plan, that would be a material consideration. And the question of the weight to be attached to it would be for a planning inspector. And that is something that planning inspectors have to grapple with anyway, where you have an emerging plan, and there are often hotly contested issues about the weight to be attached to it. But also, if we take an analogous situation to here, where you have a written ministerial statement from the government, those are seldom withdrawn, but circumstances may move on, and you have a question about how much weight should be attached to that down the line in decision-making. That is, these questions are bread and butter for the planning profession and fully capable of being resolved by a planning inspector on appeal. So it doesn't cause any difficulty. In terms of Section 65-5C, which we spent some time on yesterday, if I could just ask you to go for that the last time, it's page 58. And reliance is placed on, by the respondents, on subsection 5C. And in particular, it's suggested that whilst it's acknowledged that there is a power to call in after the inspectors publish their report, it's suggested that the way that's written suggests that it was contemplated that calling would happen prior to the report being published. And that's the way it's put by the respondents. I would suggest that subsection 5C is neutral in the debate either way. Even on the respondent's interpretation, the calling powers must have been contemplated to have applied if the Welsh ministers themselves were unhappy with the recommendation. And they would only know that after the report had been published. But also, they must have been contemplated to apply, even on the respondent's interpretation, if the LPA didn't comply with what they say is a statutory duty to adopt within eight weeks, which again, would only happen upon receipt of the report. So going back to where I started, this is a clear and compelling indication that may actually mean must. No, it's not. And then finally, on limbo-related issues, one small point which may not go anywhere, but my lord, well, just to hold gate, you asked whether in England an LPA can withdraw, draw a plan after the government has intervened. I think the answer is that they can't, which is, so it's tab 5, section 21.
Was this something introduced by the localism act?
No, it wasn't.
Section 20...
Section 21, section 21, which is tab 5, page 23. Section 21 was amended by the Localism Act, but not the bit which I'm going to, which is the same as in Wales. So it's section 21, 5A. The following paragraph applies to Secretary of State with a direction. The authority must not take any step in connection with the adoption of the document until the Secretary of State gives his direction, decision or withdraws the direction. Now, any step would encompass within it withdrawing the plan. So if the government intervenes in England, as in Wales, the LPA loses their powers at that stage, and that would include a power to withdraw.
Subsection 5, you say?
Yeah.
5A?
5A.
Is any step in connection with the adoption of the document?
Yeah. Well, I would submit that that includes withdrawal. It's the same in England as in Wales, because otherwise that would allow local authorities to avoid the effects of the calling. But anyway, I'm not sure ultimately it bears on, on either gate. I just wanted to draw that to the court's attention. Couple more points, and then I'll finally deal with Regulation 25. On the explanatory memorandum, what sort of significance isn't what's in the consultation document, but what was in the policy statement of November 2002? Because it's that policy statement which is referred to in the explanatory memorandum. And in any event, a consultation document only sets out proposals. But it is interesting that that policy statement of November 2002 says nothing about there being a mandatory duty or trying to seeking to impose a mandatory duty to adopt in Wales. And again, if the respondents are right on the change between the 1990 Act position in Wales and the 2004 Act, that is highly surprising. Then in relation to resolution and the significance of that, just to be clear, we do not say that the resolution provisions are OTOs. Some act is required to bring a plan into effect, adopt a plan. What we say, though, is that it is significant that a resolution procedure was chosen by Parliament as opposed to anything else. The reasons that set out yesterday, which is that a resolution requires a vote to have taken place, and a vote requires a choice. There were other devices that could have been available. And just to see one way in which it could have been done, if we go to Regulation 25-2. So that is tab 30, page 80. And we've obviously looked at paragraph 1. If we look at paragraph 2, though, it says, "As soon as reasonably practical after an LPA adopts an LDP, it must, and then there are various stages that are gone through to bring it to the public's attention. Make available for inspection the document, publish an adoption statement on its website, send the adoption statement to anyone who's asked for it, and send four copies of the LDP to the National Assembly." Now, one procedure that could have been adopted that would be, I would submit, more consistent with there being a statutory duty to adopt is simply to have changed the first line of paragraph 2 to say something like, "As soon as reasonably practical after receipt of an inspector's report recommending adoption", or something like, "Within eight weeks of receipt, the LPA must..." And then what we see in the remainder of the section. I would submit that that would be far more consistent with a statutory duty to adopt, where it's a procedural step, as opposed to the procedure that has been used, which is a resolution, which is a price vote. So we're not submitting that a resolution is OTOs. But our point is, it is interesting that that is the choice that's being used. But either way, even if the court finds that the resolution procedure is neutral in the debate, as far as we're concerned, that's fine, because the starting point is a presumption of a discretion, and it's for the respondents to point to that to go the other way. And then if I can finally deal with Regulation 25, and what I thought might be helpful is just to set out in a bit more detail, in light of the submissions made yesterday, what we say the correct approach is to the interaction between the 2004 Act and the regulation when it comes to the exercise of statutory construction. So first, what we're concerned with here is an interpretation of Section 67. And that's because, subject to the point about Section 62.1, it appears to be accepted that the duty to adopt can only be found within the four corners of Section 67, or certainly within the four corners of Part 6. If there's no duty to adopt in Section 67 or Part 6, one cannot be created through secondary legislation. And that's because, to use the language of Lord Scott in Regus, "Secondary legislation cannot add to or remove from Section 67 properly construed." And that's paragraph 28 in Regus, tab 39, page 149. So that's the starting point. Then in terms of doing that exercise of interpreting Section 67, we accept that it's not impermissible, as a matter of principle, to use secondary legislation to help interpret the meaning of primary legislation. However, that's subject to three important qualifications or factors. Firstly, that is only where the parent act is ambiguous. Secondly, in any event, the words used in the parent act are of most importance. And thirdly, the timeless is elapsed between enactment of the parent act and the coming into force of the regulations is relevant in determining how much weight to give to the secondary legislation. And all of those propositions, we say, are made good by the extract of Benyon that we have, which is tab 50, page 392. Which, my lord, if I could ask you to take that up. Now, I'm not going to go through all of it, but I would suggest that what we have at page 392 to 394, which I don't think we've gone to yet, is highly relevant in dealing with grappling with this issue. But in terms of my three main points, if we look at the extract of Lord Lowry's speech in Hanlon and Law Society, having gone through cases from leading textbooks, "Proposition 1: Subordinate legislation may be used in order to construe the parent act, but only where the power is given to amend the act by regulations or where the meaning of the act is ambiguous." So that's point 1. And for the reasons discussed yesterday, whilst there may have been a power to amend in Section 122 as originally enacted, that required negative resolution procedure, which doesn't appear to have been gone through. So that's proposition 1. Proposition 2, which is that in any event, the parent act is of most importance, we can see on page 394, it's the last example, and it's Lord Hughes, what Lord Hughes said in the call at paragraph 105. "I agree, of course, that subordinate legislation cannot control the meaning of the primary statute, but whereas here the primary and subordinate legislation are part of a single scheme to substitute one statute or regime for another, and are plainly intended to operate in tandem, it's not irrelevant to take into account indications of inconsistency between them." So it's not irrelevant, but what is in the wording of the parent act is of most importance. And we can see that from the overall summary from Benyon.
But also, what he said was, "It's not irrelevant to take account of indications of consistency", as opposed to contradiction.
Yeah, yeah.
If it be contradiction.
Yeah, yeah. But absolutely, but either way, as it's put in Benyon under the comment on page 392, "Even where it's contemporaneous, it's likely to be of persuasive authority at best." So that's the hierarchy. Even where you've got an ambiguous parent act, secondary legislation is only likely to be persuasive authority at best. Which leads on, though, to the importance of timing here. Because if we go over to 393 and sub-paragraph 4 and 5, where the Act provides a framework built on by a contemporaneously prepared regulation, the latter may be a reliable guide, may be decisive where they're made in pursuant superpower, particularly if they come into operation on the same day as the act which they modify. So the gap in time between the enactment of the parent act and coming in force of the regulations is relevant. And here, there is a significant gap, because we have the 2004 Act in May 2004 and the secondary legislation in October 2005. So where that takes us is the approach we suggested yesterday of first of all interpreting Part 6 without reference to the regulation. And it's only where Section 67 is ambiguous and a very clear answer is provided by the regulation that the regulation is likely to provide real assistance here as to what is meant in the Act. And we say that Section 67, read in context, is in fact unambiguous or with very little ambiguity at best, it confers a discretion. And in any event, the words used in the regulation are themselves ambiguous. Put another way, they support either interpretation of Section 67. And if we just finally go to the regulation for the last time on page 80, the authority starts at tab 30. There were two potential meanings, as the court knows. And it doesn't appear to be in dispute that the words used, that the words used are capable of supporting either interpretation. There's a point about whether the appellant's interpretation has any purpose or not, but in terms of the words, the language, appears to be suggested that they could support either interpretation. Or in any event, that's my submission.
Well, you would say, sorry, Mr. Parkinson, you would say they're compatible?
Compatible.
Is that right, with either interpretation, not that they positively support?
Yes, my lord.
Is that the way you put it?
That's the way I should have put it. And it's the way I put it now, yes, compatible.
Yeah, forgive me.
No, no, thank you for picking me up on that. The respondent's interpretation, they in effect read it as saying, "The LPA must adopt the LDP and must do so", so we add in that in our heads, "and must do so within eight weeks of receipt". So two separate things are going on here. Adopt, point 1, and do so within eight weeks. And we say, no, it simply says, "A decision on whether or not to adopt must be made within eight weeks", but the regulation doesn't tell you what decision to make. It's dealing with timing. And I would suggest that the reference to eight weeks, which Mr. Corner, my learned friend Mr. Corner, dealt with yesterday in particular, is again neutral against either interpretation. Because if adoption's mandatory, it's not immediately obvious why LPAs need two months to do what is required by statute. In terms of why eight weeks is required on the appellant's interpretation, suggested I duck that question, I didn't intend to, but I'll give the answer to now. There may be a number of reasons. Firstly, it gives a fixed period for the LPA to absorb the contents of the report and decide whether to adopt or not. But that period of reflection needs to be defined to give certainty to the multitude of parties affected by what's in the plan or not. Otherwise, an LPA could sit on their hands and avoid making a decision, and that would cause genuine uncertainty, a decision-making level about the status and weight to be attached to the emerging plan. So the LPA... So the LPA needs to elect one way or the other, and that's why, to give that certainty. And that's why there's an eight-week period to do so. It also gives certainty to the government. They know the position either way after eight weeks, and then at that point can make a decision on whether to exercise their intervention powers. So there are a number of reasons why eight weeks works with either interpretation and therefore is effectively neutral. And then overall, we say that the legislation imposes an obligation to prepare a plan, and that's designed to ensure that LPAs have up-to-date local plans. But it stops short of imposing an obligation to adopt at local level and even does so when the government has intervened. And that reflects the other twin purpose of the Act, which is to ensure that plans are not imposed that are not wanted by those that are democratically elected. On the appellant's interpretation, the Act sets out a coherent structure that balances those two objectives and avoids a situation like this where a cross-party group of councillors, including the leader of the council, are required to adopt a plan that they do not want and then use it to guide decisions. And all of this could have been avoided had the Act worked as intended and the Welsh ministers had made a decision either way on what should happen to this plan, which has been rejected at a local level. And that's how the Act is meant to work. And it's no change from two thousand and four, which was itself no change from nineteen ninety. So, my lord, if you could just give me one second?
Yes.
My lord, I'm very grateful. Unless there's anything else that I can help with, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all very much for the very clear helpful submissions that you've made to us, both in writing and orally. I thank all of you for clarity and economy of your submissions. You've given us plenty to think about, and we're going to do that. So judgment will be reserved to be handed down in due course, be circulated in the normal way of draft. Before hand-down, for typographical and other minor factual corrections only, the agreement of a draft order where agreement is not possible, submissions to be made to us within the timescale indicated at that stage. And I should emphasise finally, though this will be familiar to most of those present in court, there will be embargo arrangements on the applying to the draft judgment, and those must be strictly observed. Thank you all very much.